It is now seven PM on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Call it order, our first council meeting of the year. And we'll start out with our opening prayer by Pastor Zach Reeves from Thomas Alliance Church.
Thank you. I'll just remind you of Romans thirteen, one and two. Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. So I take very seriously that you guys have been placed here by God. And so I come just really to bless you and just take two minutes and pray. So thank you for the opportunity. Father, thank you for your grace this evening. Thank you for the truth of your word. Thank you for giving us these kind gifts, even governing authorities that we care for, pray for, submit to, walk with. Father, thank you for that grace. Thank you that you are a God of order. Pray for these folks, that you would grant to them wisdom beyond their capacity, that they would seek you and that you would grant grace to them, to our community, and to all that live in it. Father, I pray ultimately these things that your gospel would go forth and that you would be glorified. But I pray it for the good of our community as well. Father, bless this time. Be present among us and do these good things for us as a gift of your grace that all would know and love you. Pray this in Jesus' awesome and powerful name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Reeves. I'll start us out with the Pledge of Allegiance, Mrs. Mayor Kilway.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolas?
Here.
Adam Bozick?
Here.
Jessica Epstein?
Here.
Mary Gutman?
Here.
Dennis Lowry?
Mr. Lowry has been excused. He was feeling ill.
Donald Pavlik?
Here.
Ted Roy?
Here.
Thank you. We are, six of us are present this evening. For our item number four, previous meeting minutes from twelve fourteen twenty-three, those will be provided at the next meeting. Item number five, financial reports. We are in receipt of fire and EMS fund transfer in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred and street maintenance and repair fund transfer in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred from the general fund to council on twelve twenty-seven twenty-three, the appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three to council on one four twenty-four, the December financial reports to council on one four two thousand four twenty-four, the Thomas Recreation Center profit-loss report for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three to council on one four twenty-four, the income tax comparisons for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three to council on one four twenty-four, consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three to council on one four twenty-four, the income tax by source report for the month of December to council on one four twenty-four, and lastly, the revenue comparisons per major funds for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three to council on one four twenty-four. Can I get a motion to accept financial reports as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Passage of that by six zero. Number six is public hearings. We have none for this evening. Item number seven, community input. At this point in the meeting, we will open it up to anyone in the community that's present. They will get two minutes to speak. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Anyone? No? All right. Item eight, agenda additions. We currently do not have any. Anyone on council like to add anything? No? Item number nine, reports of administration or administrative officers. We'll start with our newly elected and recently taken office, the Honorable Mayor Kilway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, thank you very much. This has been a nice couple of weeks that I have enjoyed. Yes, my microphone is on, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. It's been a nice, you know, this is my second week and it's been very busy, very busy. I'm getting a nice weekly tour of the city with Mike Rohr. He's showing me all the ins and outs. I know more about water now than I've ever known in my life. I love it. Got to visit a lot of the different departments within the city, went to the police station, City Hall, all the departments, fire stations, rec center. I have not made it down to the garage, so that is going to be on my list of things to get done first thing next week. I'm actively hiring my staff. I do have a Director of Administration that will be coming in in May. Jill Stritch has been very gracious to stay and help me out a little bit. We do have a Director of HR that is going to be starting on, I believe it's the twenty-second. So please welcome Ally Schwartz when she comes in. She looks like, you know, she's going to be doing a fantastic job. I love that. And I'm kind of reinvent, re-in, looking at some of the other positions and kind of reimagining some of them so that we get the best quality people for each of the positions. So I will keep you all informed when we get those hires in. Do have my weekly meetings with the police and fire chiefs. And they have asked like for reports to councils. If there's anything in particular that you would like besides what you've gotten in the past, please let us know so that we can, you know, get something to you and in a format that you would like to have. We did have a nice little meet and greet with the mayor so that anybody that didn't know who I was could come up and meet me. So it was really great, especially I got to meet some of the people down at two-ten Osceola. They came up. It was really nice to be able to talk with them because those are the people that I really don't have a, you know, an ongoing, you know, day-to-day relationship for. So with, so it was really, really nice to see them. Tomorrow, I'm going to be speaking at the civic engagement class at the high school. I guess it's something that Mayor Klein has always done, so they asked me to come in and take his spot. We do have the boards and commissions. There are several spots available on some of the boards and commissions. Obviously, you know, Ted is one of our councilmen, so we have to replace him. But I would just like to ask anyone that's watching the council meetings right now, if you're interested in a board or commission, please let my office know. You can call up, send an email. Let us know that you're interested because, you know, that is one of the, that's how we find people that are interested in serving. So please let us know. I would like to have all of those filled by the end of this month, for sure. A nice little surprise that we had. Isabel Lawrence from Channel Three News contacted City Hall and is going to be doing a very upbeat and positive story about the city. So I will give you more information on that. They were here in City Hall doing some filming. So as soon as we find out when it's going to air, we'll let everybody know. So it was, it was a nice little exciting thing that we had. There was a ribbon cutting in the jet at Chase Bank on, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday last week. And I'd just like to really welcome the new council members, Jessica, Ted, and Dawn. Thank you guys very much for stepping up and doing what you do. We can't have a great city without a great council, so I appreciate everything. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
Yes, sure.
The boards and commissions, what spots are currently available, like?
I printed it up. Just a matter of finding it. So planning and zoning is completely full. We do have to replace Mr. Roy's position at Board of Zoning and Appeals. And it looks like Architectural Review Board. And I think there's a CIC position as well. That's not on my list because I was in this whole other list. So there's like three of them that we would like to get filled. So if you know of people, have them reach out to me.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Does a council member sit on each, a representative from council sit on each of those boards? No?
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We'll skip over item B then, as well. Wearing many hats this week. We'll go to item C, Director of Public Service. I've been asked to make sure you keep it short, sir.
Thank you. Good night. Welcome through the new year. Just wanted to start with one slide for the, for the council. It's snow season. We're on our shifts now, so we have twenty-four-hour coverage throughout the week during the snow events. And then if you note, the map there to the left lays, gives you the layout of the city streets. The blue are the mains, so those is where the snow plow drivers start. And then they move to the secondary routes. The secondary routes are pretty much through the residentials and it gives, it's a way in and out of the allotments for the most part to get you to the mains. And then the, the black mostly cul-de-sacs and some of the roads are residentials there. And those are last, their allotment roads are the last ones to be hit. And at times, we may never get off the mains, depending on the snow event. And also, it depends on when the snow hits. So the other morning, that snow started dropping at five-thirty, right at rush hour, and we couldn't even get the mains started. So it all depends. Just so council has an idea, there is a system. There's something called salt, salt, spot salting. And that's where we salt the intersections, hills, grades. And that's it until the snow event's over because we don't want to waste the salt. I mean, there, there again, you throw the salt down, it gets covered up, you're plowing it right back off again. So there is a, there is some strategy to a snow plowing in the city. So if you guys get calls and someone says my road hasn't been hit, well, we probably haven't got there yet. So that's really it in a nutshell. Unless there's any questions, there's, I have nothing else for tonight.
I have one question. I know you and I, we spoke before about maybe the addition of a second salt barn somewhere else strategically placed in the city to help kind of cut down on that timeframe to go all the way to West Avenue. Is that something we're still looking at?
Yes. I'd love to get one somewhere else.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to item D, Director of Finance.
Thank you. We have closed out two thousand and twenty-three. Based on the financial reports, I think you can, overall, we had a pretty good year financially. The income tax really rebounded in the last couple of months of the year, especially in the area of the net profit returns. Those had been down pretty substantially between thirty and forty percent. We're really driving our decrease from the prior year. But that picked up at the end of the year, I think, with the filings on extensions and estimates for the, for the next year, picking those up. So hopefully, that's a good sign that we've kind of bottomed out on those and start to see more progress in those going back up. But those are, as I've stated to council before, the net profit portion of our income tax, which is the portion that businesses pay on their net profit income, that's the most volatile piece of our income tax there is. It's just really hard to predict based on how businesses make investments in capital and all kinds of other things. So that's been a hard one to predict. But I was very happy with where we ended up, for sure. Another highlight for the year, just because this is like crazy and I know the economy and inflation and all those other things, but the benefit that we've been able to receive at the city from inflation while costs are up also, we received over nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in investment income this year. So that really helps offset those losses in income taxes that we were seeing and those other things. So that's the highest I've ever seen it. And I'm, probably five years ago, we didn't even get a hundred thousand when the interest rates were like super low. So just another great highlight for the season. We are now in the process of getting everything geared up for the new year, working on closing out the remaining items, getting employees or W-two's and those kind of things. And I will answer any specific questions anybody has.
Ms. Gilbreth, question on the Parks and Rec Center. The losses over a three-year period, that's funded from the general fund?
Right. So the Rec Center is a department within the general fund. So any losses are picked up by any overages in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
One question, just in prior years, and I think we're like two and a half, three years into, you know, since COVID and like remote work kicked in within the city. I know we were looking at like the Rita data and things like that. Did you notice anything year-over-year trend-wise that may be a benefit of those that went to remote work or vice versa? Was there a negative impact this year?
There are, the withholding, our withholding was actually pretty strong this year and so were the individual tax payments, which would be the two categories which we would receive. I think what the remote work has done for us and me looking at the reports, it's actually helped to actually diversify our withholding income. Now we're, we have, you know, a top employer is now First Energy, you know, in Taumage because us being an immediate suburb, all those people who are working in Akron, now they work at home, worked in the big banks downtown, part of their time is spent at home. So it's actually, for a community like us, it has actually helped to diversify our withholding tax. We're not as dependent on only the businesses that operate within our city limits. We also have an outreach for all those people who maybe work for businesses that are not in our city, but we're receiving the benefit because they are now allowed to work at home.
Okay.
But we pretty, I, I'm, the refunds evened out this year. We didn't have any. So I think we're, we're kind of entering into what I would call an expected normal for what we would expect to see based on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say to follow up on that, Ms. Gilbreth, that's because returning normal, people returning to work and, yeah.
Right.
Changing their income tax.
Right.
All right, thank you. We'll go to item nine E, which is our Director of Law.
Thank you. I just want to take, I guess, a little bit of time during my report tonight to kind of explain to everyone kind of what to expect for the ordinances this evening. So what we have tonight is a multitude of what we call housekeeping ordinances. What those are, are ordinances that get adopted year after year after year. There, a lot of them are going to be authorizing us to go through the bid process for things that we need for public services, roads, paving, things like that that are commonplace every year, or contracts that we typically enter into with engineers or firms that we have used as consultants in, I think, almost every case tonight for years and years and years. So as we go through these, typically, we'll have first reading adoptions. You don't have to do that, but it's kind of a way to clear them off of your docket and also allow for us to kind of proceed with the normal operations of business that we need to for the year. So that's the majority of what you have in front of you this evening. What we have done, based on years past experience, is divided some of that housekeeping. So you'll have some of it here this evening and then we'll have some of it for you at the end of January meeting. So you'll still have some of those quote-unquote "housekeeping ordinances." And then occasionally throughout the year, you'll have some that we will say, oh, this is really a housekeeping ordinance. But the timing of it just is more appropriate at a different time during the calendar year instead of the beginning. So just kind of wanted to make that clear and run through that for everybody. I know we have a lot of new council members and wanted to explain that to the public at home as well. Thank you. Yes.
For a refresher for myself and the new council members, first reading adoption, there, is that a simple majority or does it need to be a?
So you only need a majority ever to adopt an ordinance, but for it to go into effect immediately, you need to have six members of council adopt something if it's at first reading.
Okay.
So we have typically an immediate enactment provision on these ordinances especially. So for those ordinances, in order for them to have immediate enactment, you need to have six votes for that tonight. If they didn't have the six votes and let's say there was only four, for example, they would still be enacted, but they would have to wait the thirty days before they technically go into effect. And that's the difference. Once an ordinance is at third reading, then if it has a clause in it that says it's for immediate enactment, if it has gone to third reading, when, you only need the simple majority for it to have immediate enactment. So hopefully, that makes sense. There's also going to be a few ordinances that you will see where we will set a public hearing. There's one this evening that we'll set later on. And that particular one, there's a few called out under council rules that specify that they must have a public hearing and go three readings before they can change. And that one has to do with the civil service provision. And so that's a way to make sure that we are, you know, taking necessary steps. A lot of the zoning ordinances are the same way, where if you're, if you're changing a zoning provision, it does have to have three readings and a public hearing. Typically, a public hearing, sometimes it's just three readings. Sometimes the public hearing is actually at planning and zoning. So again, we'll kind of walk through those as we go through.
Ms. Raiber?
Yes.
A lot of these ordinances have already been budgeted already in the finance budget.
Correct, yes. And I think most of them have some kind of line in there that references that they're in the budget. I think some of the contractual ones, obviously, if we were to exceed what was budgeted or if we exceed, you know, needed reappropriation, those things would have to come back to council. So, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You definitely have your work cut out for you this year with three new, likely to be your fourth new one coming up in just a few weeks. So, so thank you. And your patience is going to be much needed this year, so, and guidance. So we will, that concludes our reports of administrative positions. We will turn to item ten, reports of our standing committees of council of a whole. We will go to item A, Planning and Zoning, which is Mrs. Gable.
Thank you. I will call Planning and Zoning to order. I might be the only committee that has no legislation before us tonight. I will highlight from the December activity report that was sent to council, the final plaits for the phases six and seven at Thomas Reserve were approved, so that's exciting. And as well, a certificate of appropriateness was granted for the new build at the Village Town Center at sixty to one hundred North Ave. And I believe those are the senior apartments that we voted on last year. Also, is, I think, exciting as well, we'll get rid of some of the empty spaces that have been there. Is there anything anyone has for Planning and Zoning? Okay, thank you. Seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
All right, thank you. We'll go to item ten B, Finance. Mr. Pavlik?
All right. I call the Finance Committee to order. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. We currently have first reading of ordinance and resolutions. There are six tonight. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-nine, authorizing the Director of Public Service to negotiate and the mayor to contract for various policies of insurance for the city and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. The ordinance has been read into record. Does the Service Director have any comments on this?
Yes. So it's not too bad. It was an eleven percent increase from last year to this year. Most of that was in property. It was almost a twenty thousand dollar increase in the property insurance, and that was due to the new fire station. And then the other jump was six thousand, which wasn't crazy. It was in the auto. And that's just because of the accidents that do occur with the city vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr? Do the council members have any comments on this resolution? Hearing none. Madam Clerk? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass this on first reading.
Second.
Madam Clerk, you want to call roll?
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four-nine is adopted by a vote of seven to zero, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-ten, authorizing the mayor to enter into the necessary contract or resolution for the purchase of salt and salt brine through ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and other intergovernmental purchasing program providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Service Director have any comments on this?
Yes. So this is, as the law director pointed, this is housekeeping. We order the salt probably in March for next year. This year's prices through the ODOT contract was forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents a ton. Through the CUE program, it was fifty-six dollars and eighty cents a ton. And then the brine through ODOT was fifty-nine cents a gallon. We used, usually, we order thirty-five hundred tons, but because of the exceptionally light winter last year, we're only ordering fifteen hundred tons this year, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Do the council members have any comments? Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
With that, Madam Clerk, do we call the roll?
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-ten is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-dash-eleven, authorizing the mayor to enter into the necessary contract or resolution for the city's participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Service Director have any comments on this?
Yes, thank you. So this is for equipment and trucks that might be offered through the, through the ODOT program. So throughout the year, maybe we have to purchase something and it just gives us that opportunity to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Does council members have any comments? Mr. Chair, just a question for the Service Director. You had mentioned just through kind of ODOT's co-op purchase program. And correct me if I'm mistaken, you said that that was for machinery, equipment, things of that nature. Does that give you the authority to put us into contract for, say, the purchase of like a dump truck, a snow plow, none of that, it's just giving you the authority to?
This just gives us the authority to participate in the program and use the pricing. If anything would be over the council bid threshold, we would still have to come back to council to make that purchase.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this ordinance?
I'd move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt in a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-eleven is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance two thousand and twenty-four, what, dash twelve, authorizing the mayor to enter into the necessary contract or resolution for the city's participation through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Service Director have any comments on this?
Yes, thank you. So this is similar to the previous one, but this is for HVAC equipment or playground equipment, something of that nature, if we need to purchase it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Council members have any comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-dash-twelve is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-dash-thirteen, authorizing the mayor to contract with Kastner, Westman, and Wilkins LLC for legal services and consulting services and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway and Director of Law, Ms. Raiber. This ordinance has been read into record. Does the mayor or law director have any comments on this?
Sure, I can just state that we've used Kastner, Westman, and Wilkins for quite some time for specifically labor relations and personnel issues. It's kind of It's kind of like a doctor, your, you know, your physician, your general physi-, you go to your general physician. I'm kind of like the general physician in this example. And then there's specialists, and so we have to use specialists occasionally. And so that is that, they serve that role. And we do have, we do have to use some outside counsel occasionally. And it's been budgeted for.
Do any of the council members have any comments?
Mr. Chair, do we have a set amount that we've kind of set a, an annual budgeted amount to say we anticipate this much in legal services?
We have an annual amount for legal services, but that encompasses not just this contract, it's any of our other legal services that we may have. So, you know, it fluctuates every year.
Okay. Do we, as we look at these, do we anticipate using legal services more like during the years when we negotiate our contracts, things like that?
Correct. So this year, we know that we have all the contracts that are up for negotiation, so it's going to be more likely that we are going to use them more, which we try to adjust the budget to kind of adjust for that thought. But we also have other legal issues that we're also budgeting for as well.
All right, thank you. So Ms. Rayber, to follow that up on that question, so we have a general budget, overall budget for contract services. So if one contract, you know, uses the bulk of that budget, and this puts it over, what happens then? You would have to come back to council to seek and then kind of explain what?
I'll let Molly.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the legal services are in a department called general administration. The way council approves the budget, they do not approve a budget by line item, they approve it by that totality in that department. So if we did per se have a legal issue that would take that legal line over, we don't necessarily need a reappropriation because there may be savings in other areas in that department that will allow us to kind of what I'll call borrow from that line item to pay for the other line item. So we would, if something like that were to occur, our typical stance would be we would let you know, but we would also watch it. So we wouldn't necessarily come back immediately for a reappropriation if we thought it was something that the budget had enough leeway to withstand.
But if I can also add that though, there's also the threshold of the 50,000. So if it's over the 50,000, there's an ordinance that comes before council for authorizing that contract or purchase.
When you say threshold of 50,000, what are you referring to?
Of expenditure.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Moved to adopt.
Second. Ms., you can call the roll.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance 2024-13 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2024-14 authorizing director of finance to advertise for proposals and the mayor to enter into one or more contracts for major medical, dental, eye, and other group life insurance for various officials and employees of the city providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is director of finance, Ms. Gilbreth. This ordinance has been read into the record. Any further, does the finance director have any comments on this?
Just this allows us each year to go out and accept proposals for all of our employee benefits if we need to, based on the increases we're seeing in our medical coverage.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbreth. The council members have any comments? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. The current healthcare provider we're utilizing, have we re-upped that recently? Is that under contract?
We are on a annual contract, so that would have begun at the beginning of this year. Typically, we make a decision by, I think the ordinances and the union contracts call out for the decision, at least the cost containment committee to make a recommendation to the mayor by November 1st as to when we are. So usually, end of September, beginning of October is when we're looking at that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you can read the roll?
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2024-13 is adopted by a vote of six to zero, and that concludes all the ordinances. Next, we have resolution 2024-1 authorizing Portage County Auditor to advance payment of local taxes collected for the 2023-year tax year payable in 2024 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is director of finance, Ms. Gilbreth. This ordinance has been, this resolution has been read into the record. Does the finance director have any comments on this?
I'll just go ahead and comment now, this resolution and the next one, both, one is to Portage County, one is to Summit County, because we're in both counties. This just is a resolution we need to pass so that the county auditors and fiscal office can send us property tax funds as they collect them. So they collect them, and then about every other week, they will send us their collections, starting in February, and then finalize that at the end of April.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbreth. Does the council members have any comments?
What kind of money are you talking, I mean, that we're going to get in?
So the property taxes we receive in the general fund, there's a general levy, it's 2.1 mils. Typically, we get around $1 million in the general fund with that. Now, that levy will, we may see a little increase due to the increased property evaluations on that, because that's inside millage. Second levy that we receive is the fire and EMS levy. That's the main levy that funds fire and EMS, that's a property tax levy. That is 3.75 mils, that brings in about $1.5 million a year. And then we also have a small levy that helps to fund the fire, or not the fire, the police pension. And that brings in about $95,000 to $100,000 a year.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbreth. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2024-1 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have resolution 2024-2 authorizing Summit County Fiscal Officer to advance payment for local taxes collected for the 2023 tax year payable in 2024 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is director of finance, Ms. Gilbreth. This resolution has been read into the record. Does the finance director have any comments? Council members have any comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll?
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
With that, resolution 2024-2 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Is there anything else to come before finance committee this evening? Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the finance committee meeting. Thank you.
Well done, sir. Nicely done. We will open or transfer over to our personnel committee. Mr. Bolas?
Thank you. I call Personnel Committee to order. Tonight, at first reading, we have ordinance 2024-15 tracked. There's a public hearing established on this for February 8th, 2024 at 7:05 PM. This is establishing the number of non-collective bargaining employees by department and position pursuant to RC 731.08 and providing for immediate enactment sponsored by Mayor Kilway. Any comments or discussion on this ordinance at first reading?
So this ordinance is change, potential to change an administrative assistance position from classified to unclassified. Every other administrative assistant that's in the city is unclassified. This position has been filled by classified person for a number of years and has just recently retired. So it's, and you can't change, you know, obviously, their classification while they're still employed in that position. So it's now an opportunity to have all of the administrative assistants as the same classification.
Okay, yes.
And Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify, I'm not sure if all of them are or just in that department, but definitely in that department, all the rest of them are. And as they become open, I think that's where we're moving toward.
Okay, and for all those on council as well, we're referring to the appendix item. When you're looking at the table on the far right, the civil service status, if you look at the line item for road, administrative assistant road, that's moving from C to U. Any other discussion? I know this is, again, set it for a public hearing, so that'll, that'll stay on the agenda.
And Mr. Bolas, if I can just add that civil service did already meet and make a recommendation to go ahead and adopt on this one.
Okay. All right. With that, any additional items to come before Personnel Committee this evening? All right, thank you. I close Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bolas. We will go to item D, our safety committee. Since Mr. Lowery is absent this evening, we'll go to our vice chair, Mr. Councilman Roy.
Yeah, I'd like to call safety to order. We have first reading for the resolution ordinance 2024-16 authorizing the mayor to solicit proposals and award a five-year contract for towing services for the city's safety forces and providing for immediate enactment. And this is sponsored by Mayor Kilway.
Yeah, this is, Mr. Rohr, would you like to comment?
Actually, I'm kind of familiar with this one, if you don't mind. So this is, this is actually, it's kind of a little bit unique in that it's not a request for a bid. It's not going out to bid because we're not actually the ones who pay the money. So this is a request for proposal. What happens is our police department or potentially your street department would use these services for towing. And then it's what the rate is that they're charging to the person whose car, whose vehicle has ended up being towed. And so at times, if a person doesn't reclaim, that towing company can actually make money by forfeiting the title. There's a mechanism under the Ohio Revised Code, and they can proceed to, you know, eventually get that car off their lot if nobody ever comes back for it. So it's, it's just in an effort to try to, you know, do our best to be as fair and equitable before we award that, even though we technically, this is kind of a gray territory where we're not expending any money on this. We're not expending $50,000, we're not expending really anything for the tow services, it's the people who experience the tow. So we've done this typically, it's a five-year contract, and we need to go ahead and renew and do it again.
Ms. Rayber, this, so this is, we won't see this again for five years, right?
Correct.
Yeah, got it.
Yep.
It's just timing.
And it's, it's a timing thing, and then it's kind of housekeeping, but it's just an every-five-year housekeeping type matter, so.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
Call the roll.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes. Is there any, any additional? If not, then we'll go ahead and close. Oh, no, I'm sorry. 2024-16 is passed, six to zero. All right, community issues, I guess I'm up again. We have second reading on ordinance and resolution 2023-103. We have a hearing on January 25th, 2024 at 7:05, imposing a six-month moratorium to acceptance of zoning applications for adult-use cannabis operator and providing for immediate enactment. Mayor Kilway?
This is at second reading. It's just basically putting a hold on accepting any zoning applications for adult-use cannabis operator, just so that we can make sure we get all of our I's dotted, T's crossed before anything would come in front of us and make sure that we have all of our processes in place. Mrs. Rayber, would you like to?
I just wanted to add that for the record, actually, this was sponsored by Mayor Klein prior to him departing, so it would continue to be sponsored by Mayor Klein.
So we should change it too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just leave it, go back to that.
Ms. Rayber and Mayor Kilway, comment on this? This would follow essentially what the state has kind of put out, like in terms of like licenses, like a liquor license, there could be a cannabis license?
So this is not that, this is a moratorium. So basically, right now, the state legislature, so the issue was passed by the, by the, by the public in November. And it provides for municipalities to be able to make decisions about zoning, so that we can decide whether or not to permit, not permit zoning operators, distributors, et cetera, et cetera. So before we take an application, which shouldn't be happening anytime soon anyway, because they're not up and running with their licensing system through the state. But this is just a way to have us be able to look at it so we can make a decision and know which way we want to go. Currently on the books, we have prohibited medical marijuana, so no matter which way we go, we probably want to be either consistent with that or not consistent with that. So we need to, we need to look at it. And so this is a way to, basically, the moratorium for, would just put a pause on it. So people cannot, we can't process their application for the six-month period while we're doing our homework and looking at what we want to do and what we think that our public would want us to do. So it just gives us that pause.
Thank you.
And it does not, I would just also like to reiterate, it does not affect people being able to comply with the law and do the, it's just, it's just about the operator, it's just about zoning. It's not about all the rest of it.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the law director. Currently, since everything's being discussed at the State House, do you have a timeframe for how long they have to discuss the changes and implement them?
No, I think initially after passage, the Senate moved pretty quickly to adopt some legislation. And then I think there was thought that the House was going to act before the end of the year, but then they didn't. So I don't know what the timeframe is, and they don't really have, I mean, again, there's a licensing agency. So I don't know what they're going to, I can't predict the state legislature at all, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we can open it up to, when, yeah, we open it up to discussion, so.
If you want to go ahead and?
If you would like to approach the mic, state your name and address, and you'll be given two minutes to speak.
Lee Giddon, 1602 Timber Top Drive, Townes, Ohio. My question is, is when will the citizens of Townes be able to speak to council on their view on this item?
Well, you're welcome to speak on it now. This is just about the moratorium, so this is just the pause. But in the meantime, I think you should feel, you know, people should feel free to let their, let their council people know what their thoughts are on whether or not, again, this is limited to zoning.
Correct.
Whether or not, you know, how the city should act with regard to zoning on this matter. And I think as that moratorium is in place, that's the perfect time for people to send in communications to your council people and reach out.
Okay.
Ms. Rayber, don't we have the public hearing next council meeting?
Yeah, and there's a public hearing on this moratorium, but I think he's, I think he's asking about after the moratorium, like what you actually want to see as the end result, is that?
Correct. Actually, there's a lot of that area that I'd like to see go on. I mean, I know we already have the blockage for medical, and if there's going to be any of them, that would be the one we have. I do not believe, and this is through research, that it is good for the city. I do not believe, and this is through research, that it is good for the city. The whole law isn't good for the state. You can look through the states that have passed it, and it it's just not good. I do believe we need to do serious thought on what we need to do to keep it out of the public areas. What people do in their own homes, no, I'm not out for governing everybody in their homes, but in our public areas, there are quite a few of us that are medically challenged already, and anytime we get rolled into smoke, it blows us into either asthmatic attacks, emphysema. I mean, we're trying to block smoking, just general smoking, and America's been smoking since we've been America. And now they're allowing this to go on. I I think we need to put serious thought into just to block it from the public areas.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And yes, to reiterate to Mr. Pavlik's point, there is the public hearing that is about the moratorium, which will be this next council meeting, right at the beginning of the council meeting on January 25th.
If I may ask a question? So in the section where there could be an appeal due to economic hardship and council would have to make that determination, is there any type of precedent or guidelines that council could use? I think that would probably be an unlikely or rare event, but just to be prepared.
It's rare. That type of language is kind of provided as a due process for an applicant who would be denied that, and they would have had to have some kind of, I think, some kind of vested interest already in the process. I don't think we're going to have that situation in this case. We had, we have no one who has indicated that they are going to move forward. And again, because right now, there's not even the licensing, they haven't set up the mechanism yet, the state regulations, et cetera, so it's not like we expect that we're going to get an application tomorrow, but this is just, again, we don't know at what point that's going to come into place, so this is just giving us some time to look at it internally. So, good questions, though. And if it, if that were to happen, and if we got to that point, then I would certainly be giving advice as to how to evaluate that.
Okay, thank you. And just a brief follow-up, having just taken office recently, has there been any, aside from the gentleman that just spoke, has there been any reach out from the public to administration prior to today?
I believe we had one or two other people who had come to a meeting soon after that was enacted back in the fall, in November, I believe, who had some concerns and who had expressed some some concerns. But I think, you know, as you're talking to people and you're talking to constituents, trying to get a sense of what they want to do, again, keeping in mind, it's not about personal use, it's not about them going to a licensed facility or anything like that, it's about, it's about the zoning and Towns enacting zoning regulations, whether or not to permit it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll go first reading of Resolution Ordinance 2024-7, authorizing the mayor to contract with Branstad or Carroll Incorporated for engineering and consulting services related to parks and recreation design and engineering and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsored by Mike Roar.
Councilman, real quick, this is our main engineer for our parks and rec, and they were the ones that did our park master plan, so throughout the year, if we need some engineering done, we solicit them for the park work.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
It's passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll go ahead and close out community issues.
Thank you, Councilman Roar. We will go to item F, our Public Service Department or our committee, Mrs. Councilwoman Epstein.
Uh, thank you very much. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, including water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resource, recycle, waste, and trash. We have several first reading ordinances this evening, and I'll begin with 2024-1, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to enter into contract for pavement maintenance and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by Director of Public Service Roar. Would, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next three, one, two, and three, they are all giving, this is for going out to bid for roadwork, so that's what these next three are.
The basic housekeeping we were talking about earlier. Okay. Does council have any discussion?
I would move to adopt.
I'll second that.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
All right, we have ordinance 2024-1 has passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have 2024-2, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to enter into a contract for pavement marking and providing for immediate enactment, sponsored by Director of Public Service. This would be the second item he mentioned as housekeeping.
I'll move to adopt this at first reading.
I will second that.
Please call the roll.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
All right, that has passed with a vote, excuse me, 2024-2 has passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have ordinance number 2024-3, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise and solicit bids and the mayor to enter into contract for concrete projects on public property and providing for immediate enactment, also sponsored by the Director of Public Service, also a housekeeping item you mentioned.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
And I turned my page too soon, 20, ordinance 2024-3 has passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have ordinance number 2024-4, authorizing the mayor to contract with CT Consultants for Engineering and Consultant Services relating to water system development and other general engineering service and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by Director of Public Service. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, so this is to one of our engineering firms that we use, they specialize in water for the most part, so, and sanitary sewer, so if we need anything, we'll solicit them.
Question, how often are they used? I mean, just out of curiosity.
CT, I don't think we've used them, maybe a year ago, we used them.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Point of order, just, so just per reference, we need to make sure that we open it up for discussion prior to placing it for vote.
Okay. Ted Roy?
Is there any discussion?
I do have one question. Thank you. In going through a lot of these pieces of legislation, I noticed one of the first few lines talks about, you know, we've contracted with so-and-so company since, and then there's a year there. I was just curious if that is something that we need to take a deeper dive into, potentially opening that up for maybe an RFP or something like that, since some of these companies we've utilized for many years. Perhaps there's a more competitive business or pricing out there from a different business, so.
We we do solicit the RFPs, and it's just not these folks, but just because they're the main ones doing our our engineering for water lines, they could surpass that 50 pretty quick. So we do solicit, just not these guys, it's, there's other ones we do solicit.
Okay.
We have two RFPs out right now, one for the Roundabout and one for the cremation plaza over there at the cemetery, and there's two engineers that's not on this list that we did solicit.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we already had a motion in a second, do we need another? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
2024-4 has passed with a vote of six to zero. Moving on, we have ordinance 2024-5, authorizing the mayor to contract with Burgess and Nipple Inc. for engineering and consulting services relating to water system development, general engineering services, and planning and zoning consulting, and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by the Director of Public Service. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is probably our our main engineer of record, as mentioned, zoning, water, and just general engineering services they do, so.
I'll make a, oh, sorry.
Would council like to discuss?
We're ready.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2024-5 has passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, we have ordinance number 2024-6, authorizing the mayor to contract with GPD Group for General Engineering and Consulting Services and Providing for Immediate Enactment. This is sponsored by the Director of Public Service. Do you have any additional comments?
Uh, this is an engineering firm we use for general as well as most of our road engineering, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Epstein, I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting due to a business conflict. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Madam Chair, I just had a quick observation in the actual piece of legislation, I believe there's a typo in it.
That was pointed out to us earlier, we'll make that correction. So just for council and the public's information, if it's a non-substantive thing, we can make those changes like that. I think the the, it was GDP was a typo there instead of GPD, so we'll make that edit before the final version, and we can do that without an official amendment.
And can you remind us from our discussion earlier, the minimum required vote here to pass would be?
To pass would be four, so you can still adopt it tonight. I I don't think we're going to be exceeding the 50,000 in the first few weeks, so it should be fine that this one doesn't take effect until 30 days from now.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
You just called Pavlik and you just abstained.
Donald Pavlik?
Abstain.
Uh, we have a vote of four with one abstention. The resolution, resolution, or excuse me, ordinance 2024, did I, what did I say, four? Excuse me, five, has passed with a vote of five. Had, so ordinance 2024-6 has passed.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have ordinance number 2024-8, authorizing the mayor to contract with DMS Water Solutions LLC for engineering and consulting services relating to water system development and other general engineering services and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by the Director of Public Service. Do you have any comments to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a, an engineering firm we use mostly for sanitary sewer only, so with the with the cost for sanitary sewers, everybody knows, it's important that we keep looking at better ways to improve that system, so.
Council, is there anything to add?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I will second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2024-8 has passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That concludes our ordinances for the evening. Are there any other additional items to discuss? Hearing none, I close committee.
Nice job, thank you. We'll move on to item 11, reports of special committees. We currently only have the one, which is Council Operations Committee, and Mr. Bolus, I believe you have some comments?
Yeah, just a quick update that I'll be scheduling a meeting hopefully next week with the Dove and our IT department and the mayor to just coordinate the various AV upgrades that were in budget and approved, to submit the official orders, you know, with the various technologies, there are some back orders and, you know, lead time that's needed, so I'll be coordinating that meeting, and then hopefully we'll get that on the calendar, and then we'll be seeing some upgrades with our microphones and our our main display and some other items. Thank you.
Mr. Bolus?
Thank you.
Since this comes under Council Operations, as everyone is aware, I'm doing the computers this evening, but since this is council's meeting, I would expect that going forward, council will have either the clerk or the president or somebody from council running the computer, so you can manage your own meeting a little bit better that way, okay? So, and we're making that change going on with all of the committees that use the, this room and with the computer and everything, so.
Great. And thank you, and that's something that the mayor and I, we've discussed as well of, that'll give council the opportunity to, if you have additional materials that you'd like to have up on the screen or for even the public to see at home, that gives us the opportunity to have that material on there. So that'll be something that we'll work with, getting that information to Gina and Susan ahead of time, obviously, so that way that information can be pulled up in whenever that is needed, so.
So it won't be from our computers, it'll just, you have to give the information.
Yeah, it'll be on the one central computer, and then I think we just kind of figured out that if we have a wireless mouse, we may be able to pass that down the line.
Right.
To be able to just control.
Yeah, there's a little clicker that gets passed down. Yeah, and honestly, this is like the easiest thing in the world to do. I had 15 minutes of instruction, and I'm not a real techie person, so, I mean, it's real easy to do, real easy.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, well done. I think it's going to really enrich our meetings because we'll be able to bring forward even, you know, if it's, you're out there meeting with a constituent and, you know, you have a picture or something of their yard or, you know, their driveway, something that you need to address or bring up on council floor. I think that that's a good use of our technology, it's good use of our live streaming, and it's something that I think the mayor and I, we've talked about, and it's going to be a great addition for us, so.
Right. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bolus, for the Special Operations Committee or Council Operations?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 12, announcements, council, any announcements for anything? I just wanted to point out, we had 19 pieces of legislation slash resolutions, and we did that in a little over an hour, so, well done. A lot of you were questioning whether or not we would stay in time, and we've done well. The only other, there are three other things that I'd like to bring up, as Ms. Gobright had pointed out in an email, that there is a seminar coming up that's put on by Ohio Municipal League for Council Members. I would strongly suggest that we attend one of those meetings to just learn more, so. The other two items, something that I overlooked during the organizational meeting was there's two other, that I'm aware of, two other committees, commissions that are part of the city So that's our two council representatives. And then, Mr. Roar, do you expect to hold the Veterans Committee meetings, and do you still need a council representation during that meeting?
I think that's already set, so no. There's a member on council, and I believe that's you right now.
That's me. Okay.
Yeah, so that one, the term didn't end. So there's some boards and commissions that council members are on, but the, like, the turnover hasn't happened, so you're, there wasn't a vacancy in it created by the shift. So that was one of them.
Yep. So I believe that is all the other commissions, boards that we are on, other than Board of Control, which I'll be sitting in for Board of Control. But other than that, if there's any others that pop up?
And then personnel automatically sits in on, like, comp board.
Yes.
Yes, sir. You sparked a question for me, we're writing seminars. In terms of the council training budget, like, for the past four years, we really haven't utilized it, and I, I would like for all of us to utilize it this year. I'd like to put our heads together, think through what's the best way to utilize that, whether it be, you know, I know there's various discounts available, if you have, like, you know, group training, things like that, you know, if we're talking about grants or different legislation, you know, I know when I first got on council, there was actually, you know, a first-time councilperson training in Columbus that got canceled because of COVID. So just thinking through, as a holistic council, you know, we haven't utilized that year over year, but it's there. So I know it's not a lot, but it's, we, I think we could all take advantage of that this year.
Right, yeah. And as, as training comes available, that the city is using, that, you know, we can get economies of scales and stuff like that, we'll work with council.
Thank you. That's it for announcements. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
All right. The time is 8:13, and we will adjourn council.